Good afternoon to you all and welcome to this special meeting of the Garner Town Council. Look forward to the meeting today with several discussion items. And since our clerk is not here, we'll dispense with some formalities. But in terms of calling of the roll, I'm going to declare that we have a quorum here and everybody's accounted for. And Mr. Singleton is on his way and should be here in approximately two or three minutes, we think. So I think somebody's taking a few notes, but if they will just note that four members are here, Mr. Singleton's on the way. So, okay, we're going to follow the agenda as it is published. And I don't think there's any reason I need to deviate from that, that anybody knows in terms of moving something ahead of someone else. Is that right? Okay. So with that being the case, I'm going to recognize our planning director, Mr. Jeff Trezenberg, who will, I believe, be presenting. And also, there's some Wake County staff members who also are presenting today. I'm sure you'll introduce those to us, Mr. Trezenberg.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Good afternoon.
Council members, I don't get to say good afternoon too often.
Right.
So yes, today, to kick off our growth session discussions, we wanted to have a little bit of chance to talk about previous ETJ efforts and, but more particularly focus on a project that the county is working on now and how that could affect our ability to acquire and exercise additional ETJ powers over some other areas of land. So for those of you who weren't here in 2016, 2017, I went ahead and provided you with a copy of our last report, just to kind of give you an idea, because I know there were some questions about getting further south to 1010 and the 540 corridor and some of the challenges that we had. And so hopefully you could see from that about how the criteria that the county has currently are very utility focused. And without specific projects in the CIP that we're either funding or Raleigh is funding as part of the system expansion, it was very difficult to justify those areas south of 1010 Road and even to some extent, some of the areas further along Swift Creek. Cleveland School to Benson Road to 1010 is kind of the ridge line. And so while we had good water and sewer infrastructure further upstream, we also did not have infrastructure downstream. So even taking in at the time, some of the areas south of New Bethel Church was a little questionable because we didn't know how really we were going to serve those areas either, except for to have a subdivision come in and build their own pump station. So we did, we did go ahead and bring in the ETJ. We got permission to bring that part north of Swift Creek in that area. But in the absence of a plan to do a regional type sewer system in that area, it was decided that we would not be allowed to take in the areas on the other side of Swift Creek, between Swift Creek and Cleveland School Road. So now, like I say, the county is redoing their long range plan. They're looking at altering their criteria for ETJ. To my knowledge, Wake County, we're the only county in North Carolina that uses a criteria kind of based system for extending ETJ. Most other places, it's either a thumbs up or thumbs down vote with the county commissioners based on the state legislation, which is purely based on population. If you're over a certain size, you can ask for up to two miles. And if you're even bigger, you can ask for up to three miles. And that's kind of it. When I was in Burlington, that's how it worked with Alamance County. We just asked for three miles. They said, okay. And we had three miles of ETJ. But here, we do take a look at criteria that the county has established. It's been a good process, very clear cut. And we eventually just come to an agreement between staffs and the planning commissions and the councils and boards as to what's appropriate, given the state of things at the time. So that's all I really planned to say about that unless you had specific questions about the 2016-17 expansion. Mr. Tim Maloney is here from Wake County. He's head of their planning, planning program over there. And we have some of his staff attending virtually as well, who will be giving you a presentation about their comprehensive planning program that they're going through now and to kind of give you an idea of how the criteria will change and how that may affect Garner and our ability to extend our planning jurisdiction further going forward.
Yeah, I was going to say unless anybody has a burning question, we'll proceed. But I think Mr. Matthews wants to...
You went through a whole lot there quite.
Yes.
I was hoping we could see something up here with the lines. Are we going to see something like that later?
You will, yes.
Okay. And then said the criteria, some towns do a thumbs up, some are down. What is that criteria that the staff has come up with far as setting our ETJ lines out there?
So currently here in Wake County or elsewhere?
Well, here and Wake County, I guess.
Okay. Yeah, so in Wake County, currently, they've got seven criteria. Some of the criteria are how much progress you've made on annexing your previous ETJ. So do you still have a lot of ETJ left that you haven't expanded into? Do you have plans to provide for water and sewer? That's the biggie. And then there's a couple of others that are kind of related to that. Another one is, do you have a comprehensive plan in place that will allow for urban development? So development of at least, you know, two and a half dwelling units per acre or more. So, and then another one was really simple, like, is it in your urban service area? Obviously, we're not going to bring anything that's not in our urban service area. But those seven criteria, we would work through, we had to prepare a report. Their staff, their planning board, and the Board of County Commissioners all had to review that and agree to it and come up with that decision to say, okay, you've met our criteria, we're, we're okay to approve. In other parts of the state, it's purely just based on population. So with our size municipal town, we're over 25,000. If we were in Alamance County, we could just say, we want to extend our ETJ three miles out because that's what, that's what, eh, what is allowed by state legislation. And then the Alamance County Board of Commissioners would have voted up or down based on that. So it's much, a much less rigorous process in other places, but this process that we have in place here really does try to drill down and not do ETJ arbitrarily so that we really get to the areas that are ready to be developed.
I guess my second question is, last time I looked at this, it looked just like this. Is there a reason we don't use specifics, a Highway 1010? I'll just use that as an example. Everything on Highway 1010 north is in our ETJ. And that's a good boundary all the way over to my Collis Crossroads. And I'm sure it could be in some other areas around our town. Is there a reason we don't do that versus having in and out, in and out like that? Which I don't understand the logic behind that.
Sure. So there's a few things that go into that. One is whether or not the road kind of mirrors the sewer basin. Really, the sewer basins are what drive a lot of the initial boundary setting because it's easier, once you have infrastructure in one basin, you can kind of plan to serve the whole thing. 1010 Road is a ridge line though, so it does kind of parallel what some of those early boundaries look like. Wake County though, because Lake Benson is a water supply, the county does maintain planning jurisdiction over the southern side of the lake, between the lake and 1010 Road. So that's not in our urban service area. So we couldn't just say, hey, we want to go all the way to 1010 Road. We have to carve out that place that's between Lake Benson and 1010 because that's county jurisdiction and for, for right now, will always be county jurisdiction per previous agreements. And then when you get over to like 401, it gets really jagged. That was just a conscious decision on everybody's part to try to not upset existing neighborhoods unnecessarily. Whether, as much as we talk about it and we say that ETJ is not a requirement for annexation, a lot of people in the general public do think that it's a precursory step. And so when you do include those existing neighborhoods who are on well and septic, the only way they're ever going to get water and sewer is if you do a special project and you do assessments and things like that. There was a conscious decision just to leave those neighborhoods out and not upset the apple cart and just focus on parcels of property that were really developable or could be developable. So some of it, it results in a, in a very jagged boundary for sure. But again, kind of a conscious effort to kind of let those neighborhoods stay in the county, keep county zoning. If they ever do have water and septic problems, well and septic problems in the future, then, you know, we'll have to have that discussion. But for now, it's just kind of best to lay low.
The only reason I bring this up, this was something that was on my mind and I think some other council members whenever, an earlier part of the year, where all the growth we've got going on and to kind of wrap our arms around where everything's going. I look forward to seeing our map so we can talk about it. Look forward to hearing the county. I know that gentleman quite well. And we'll get updated and see where we're going to go from here. So that's all I got, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that.
Let's, let's, let's go ahead and dig into it. Some of the questions may be answered as part of presentations. And certainly there will be plenty of time for questions along the way.
Absolutely.
You got just one?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah. So just, actually, about both are about Fuquay. So when Fuquay did their expansion, are they, were they subject to the same set of rules that we would be now going forward? Okay. I know the utility stuff is a whole other issue with Fuquay. The other is, when they did their ETJ, I know they asked for a lot, it got whittled down. Did they also include any changes to their short and long-term designations in their urban service areas or did...
I'm not aware that they did. That's possible. And that is something that I've talked with a few of you about too, is the whole short-range versus long-range urban service area. I think if I understand the way the county's going, there's still going to be urban service area, but those kind of designations will kind of be replaced with what they're proposing now.
But we'd have a different set of...
Yeah. So I, hopefully that will leave us with one less step to hopefully go through by not having to make that distinction between short-range and long-range. We'll just be able to look at their new criteria and, and go with that.
Okay. Thank you. Everybody, that's okay. I'll give you a chance later on. Okay. All right.
Mr. Maloney?
Good afternoon, Chair. How are you?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. I am Tim Maloney. I'm the Director of Wake County Planning, Development, and Inspections. I want to go back to the council member's question. When you think about the short-range and long-range urban service areas that we have right now as a part of our geographic jurisdictions, I think more importantly, think about your annexation boundary agreements that you have with your neighboring communities. That is a critical boundary. You all have, I know the town of Garner has valid current annexation boundary agreements with your bordering towns. To me, that is the most important thing to be aware of as you go forward. None of that is changing in anything that we are talking about or presenting going forward with the Wake County, with Wake County's comprehensive land use plan. Speaking of that, we are in the throes of creating the first ever Wake County comprehensive plan. We've had a land use plan for many years now. It's, it's, it still works for us today, but it's not comprehensive. We're rolling a lot of different thinking into that plan. We've been working on it for over 18 months and certainly the pandemic has slowed us. However, since March, we have been working behind the scenes. We've not been able to get out and speak with the public, do some community outreach with stakeholders, but we've been able to do some of that virtually. Nonetheless, we are getting close to presenting a draft plan to our Board of Commissioners in the November timeframe as a draft with early adoption for consideration in January of next year, at which time we will, we'll be moving forward with implementing that plan. The plan is going to be drilling down into a lot of different areas, but it's going to focus on, you know, how we can manage growth better than we do right now. Tim Gardner, who's going to present to you here remotely, is going to share some growth numbers with you. And the, the focus of the plan is, how do we manage that growth better than what we're doing right now? How do we promote density and walkable communities and centers that everybody loves to be around? That you, as a municipality, are great at doing. The county doesn't do that. We can't do that on well and septic. We want to turn that over to you so that you can build those, those kind of communities. But yet also, how do we preserve the rural areas that we still have in Wake County that is Wake County's jurisdiction? When you look at our land use plan right now, the only areas that will in perpetuity be Wake County jurisdiction are the water supply watersheds, parts of Swift Creek, just about all of Falls Lake, all of Little River and parts of Jordan Lake. But this plan is contemplating other areas outside of those watersheds that could be rural in Wake County unincorporated for, you know, quite foreseeable future. So we are putting that thought into this plan as well. But I think what we want to talk most about today, and Tim Gardner's going to get into that a little bit, is, okay, how do we do some of that with, with certain tools? ETJ is one of them. We know you have an interest in talking more about that. As Jeff mentioned, we have seven criteria right now. What we are proposing is to tweak some of those. That criteria is somewhat outdated because annexation laws have changed and you, as a municipality, don't have the ability to annex in ways that you used to annex and grow. Also, what can the county do to, to create conversations and move development towards municipalities when it's on the fringe, when it's on the edge, when it can be better served by a town of Garner with water and sewer, with other urban services that you all can provide that the county cannot? So you're going to hear us talk about municipal transition standards, things that we can roll into our development ordinance to move development towards the towns. And then even subdivision standards. How can the county operate more like the municipality when it comes to subdivision standards? Right now, our standards are, I'll characterize them as weaker than a municipal. So we incentivize development to come to the county and develop on large lot, spread out subdivisions that are hard to serve in the future from a municipal standard and for you ever to want to annex them. So how can we act more like a municipality on subdivision standards as well so that, yeah, it develops in our jurisdiction today, but in the future, when those services that you all provide are nearby, it's easier for you to annex it? So I'm going to stop there. Tim Gardner is a senior planner in our office and he is managing this project. And he is going to be with us virtually here. I think we tested it earlier. And I'm going to turn it over to Tim to walk you through this. Please interrupt as we go along. We're going to share some highlights of the plan, but then later on, sort of drill down into the ETJ and other questions that you have. So Tim, are you online?
I am.
Okay, it's all yours.
Just a quick sound check. Am I coming through correctly?
Yes, you are.
Thank you very much. And in the slideshow presentation, please.
Yes, I may not have to...
Are you not seeing it, Tim?
I'm not seeing it. I will assume that it's there. There it's up now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So I'm going to put some more flesh on the bones of what Tim Maloney just went through. And I should tell you what we've been working on with the plan we've brought up so over the past 18 months.
Should we increase the volume just slightly? Maybe?
So first, I'm going to cover some things related to how the plan will look, what we looked at, and our schedule. Essentially, what we've done is an 18-month, a two-year process, looking through, is there an echo on your end?
No, Tim, we're trying to get your sound a little louder in the council chambers. If you have any control over it on your end, please adjust it. But I think we're going, we're trying to adjust it in the council chambers.
Okay. I will see if I've got any...
And there will be, so there will be a little bit of feedback because of the, the sound that's coming in the room is, is coming back through on the broadcast that, so you can see what's happening. So we're not hearing the feedback and so, and by turning it up a little bit louder, we're probably going to make it a little bit worse. But if you could just power through, it's coming through fine on our end.
I will do it. I just wanted to make sure that I was coming through clearly. Appreciate it. And then, so after, so if you go to the next slide, please. As Tim mentioned, we've been working with some regular trends that have been going on in Wake County for a number of decades as far as the amount of growth that we're seeing. In general, we're growing right around somewhere between 20,000 and 25,000 people per year. Next slide, which breaks down to about 62 residents per day. Currently, we're a little bit lower than that, no, go back. A little bit lower than that at 56, but these are the types of trends that when we ask questions regarding how do we want to work with growth in the future, this is, these are the types of things that we needed to take into account. Next slide. As we look at the growth trends, we need to take into account that about 20% comes from natural increase and about 42 people per day of that number is new people moving in the area. So the types of questions that we wanted to make sure we're in front and center with our plan over the next 10 to 15 years, we're looking at potentially 250,000 people to 350,000 people coming to this area. And again, the math, mathematics is there to show you what we've done. There are some reasons to say, well, maybe it's not 62, maybe it's 60, but in general, we're looking at those numbers. When you are breaking it down by number of units that we might need, that basically means around 100, somewhere 125,000 to 175,000 more residential units that might be needed. Again, there's ways that we can adjust those numbers down. Currently, we're seeing a, a trend towards smaller number of people per unit, but that's just generally what we're looking at, trends. That would be a matter of maybe a million to 1.4 million additional trips per day. We get the choice of how those trips are made. And then statistically, we have about 10% of our population that is in poverty or below the poverty level. And it's, you know, it's kind of counterintuitive that people that are in poverty would be moving to this area, but it is something that we do see because this is, there's an area, there's more opportunities here than there areas other than they would be coming from. Okay? So my, one of the things that, as Tim mentioned, our planning study has been slowed a little bit by the pandemic, but we were able to get a significant amount of work done prior to. And as you can see with the numbers on the screen, significant amount of pulling information and we feel like we've got a pretty good feel for what the community's looking for. What we've been asked to do is these four key community priorities. One would be significant changes needed to plan for growth. We want to see that there's advanced protection for open space and natural areas. Very key to what we're going to be talking about today is there'll be directing growth to the towns. And as Tim mentioned, we want, they want to see a stronger creation of walkable environments and a focus on that. With our plan structure, and so there's various different ways that you can approach a comprehensive plan, you know, not to get too wonky, but you know, many of them are combined plans where you take all the ordinances and you have in different locations. So a, you know, a greenway plan and a, you know, open space, or a open space plan and a housing plan, whatnot, and you put it all in one location. What we're looking at is actually using the term comprehensive to mean that it's looking at lots of different elements. And so what you'll see as part of our structure is that we have key vision outcomes that will direct the plan, the growth development framework map that we'll spend the vast majority of time on today, showing the, the geography of how we want to see things occurring, and then high-level metrics and goals that will basically say, how do we know we're accomplishing what we want to try to accomplish through this plan? And so if you go to the next slide, this is just another way to look at it. Again, you have the vision outcomes that are basically the compass setting, saying, here's what we want to try to achieve, the framework map being the geography and then the performance metrics, providing a annual look, are we accomplishing what we want to try to accomplish? And again, all of this is trying to make sure that we're not just looking at some of the things we've looked at in the past, but we're looking at different elements as well, and I'll, I'll circle back on that. As Tim mentioned, we are trying to, we're nearing the end of this and trying to wrap up the process. And so you'll be hearing, all of this is in draft mode right now that I'm going to go through right now, but we'll be sharing it with our commissioners in, later this, this fall and looking towards approval in early winter 2021. Okay. So I'm going to go quickly through the, the vision outcomes. And again, what we're looking at to do is to make sure that we have a plan that's pushing for a future that is inclusive and equitable, healthy and active, sustainable environment. Next slide. Well, essentially what we're looking at is various different things as far as infrastructure, transportation, health, development, community and development environment, and the economy, and to make sure that we're, the, the way this plan is structured is essentially say, the map that I'm going to go through in future, or in, in a second, isn't just, you know, some, a geographic plan that we pull out of nowhere, but it's essentially said, if we achieve these ends and we choose to achieve this map, it will provide more opportunities for more people to have a, you know, better solutions in that, in that area. And we'll circle back on that as we need to, but in general, what we want to do is, is it's not just a land use map, but it's a land use map tied to those key principles. So this is what we're recommending as new development framework map for Wake County. One of the goals of this was to make sure that it was relatively simple and, you know, straightforward and, and talked about things that are going, that currently in county's jurisdiction, but also established goals and objectives for some of the things that are in the municipal areas, so it's a true partnership plan. This is a blow up of the areas that are in the Garner area and I'll do some of, go through the different categories and then we'll circle back to look at things that are in the Garner area. Okay? So what, what this map is, it's the same map, but what we've, we've done is we've overlapped gray, which represents things that are your, the municipal planning jurisdiction today. That means corporate limit and ETJ. And this is the Garner area. And so these are the places, the things that are not gray, the things that are going to be interfaced, things that are going to be with the tools. In a few minutes, these are the areas that we're looking. And so specifically, competition that you were having, folks, we started, you've got the 540 running through the south area, 1010 is a mile or so north of that. And those are the areas that you were just looking at, and these are the question areas that Garner's had. And essentially, what this map is suggesting is because the urban service boundary is not changing, we now have these new codes on the county land use plans that are anticipating, working with the town to transition these areas. Are there any questions that you want? Hearing none, we'll take... Okay, I'm going to, so in the next few slides, they're basically going to give you some feel of what the DIP category is on our, on our map and, and how much acres they represent. So the first category is we're calling it trended, but this is our map. These are the areas that are around, the RT Corp. presented some of the other key DIP locations for eight. There's about 4,000 acres. There's about 4,000 acres in this area, or about 2% of the county total acreage. Sorry, it's about 8,000 acres. I can't see it now. But essentially, as the picture suggests, these are the areas that are supposed to be very dense and walkable and creating opportunities if, you know, people that are looking for a lifestyle or walkability and potential to transit exits are, are an option. These are the areas that those people left. And circle back to that. But essentially, the area on 401 around the tri and area in Garner is one of those areas that's identified. As noted, there will also be a specific goal for the percentage of population that would like to see over the next 10 to 15 years located in those areas. The next areas are essentially walkable center areas. This is something that out of our public engagement was extremely popular in the fact that particularly when we talked about the NC 540 interchanges. The question was, if we have an opportunity to develop these differently, then we fill up some of our other interfaces. Should we take advantage of that? And again, extremely popular to say, well, should these areas be opportunity areas for, you know, more walkable areas that are potentially multi-use? And that's, that's essentially where identifying these, the purple there is on this map as, as you can see in the large area in Garner and in the, in the, the NC 540 here identified. So that's basically just, you know, this would be not necessarily all of the areas perfect for this, this density. But there would be clusters within that location that might. So based off those two categories, this is looking at Garner area. And Jeff, do you have a pointer to basically look at the, in the BRT cord on the front side? They've got the, exactly. That's, that's essentially where the transit focus areas in the Garner area are located. And then you, around the White Oak location. And then essentially the NC 50 and NC 540. And then the old stage road location and NC 540 are always identified as the walkable areas. The next slide is essentially, this is to look at the walkable center location of NC 540 and old stage road. And what this is essentially, so the, the, the blue circles are essentially one per day site. So one of the things that's fairly easy for us to do is to say, you know, because of the orange development that presents subdivision that are already in place, that, you know, that this area is already developed. And with the two circles are identifying that there are a number of different places that we can look at and say, working with the development community, what are the options and potential for this area? As was mentioned already, this meeting, we, we know that we have critical water and sewer question in this area. But again, this, what this plan is trying to get at is to say, we want these areas to function differently. What are the tools, what are the mechanics, what are the efforts we need to take to create these opportunities? Next slide. So I'm going to go through the, so last two categories. This is one that's, it's, because it makes up the vast majority of the map pieces to kind of gloss over. But what, what these are, these are basically the community areas that are emerging from all of the evolution that you all have been doing on your regulations and most municipalities have. Specifically looking at, you know, connectivity sidewalks, greenways, parks, parks, stormwater. And so these are essentially the areas that we're wanting to be, you know, extremely viable parts of the fabric that you all are building or the community. As you can see that this about 57 or 70% of, this is a fair amount of potential growth that is increasing. Next slide. I'm going to skip past one and talk primarily about the rural areas, which are the piece of property that we are anticipating would remain as county, but more importantly, would remain as rural. As Tim Maloney mentioned, these areas are more than just a water check. And then going to the next category, what we're looking at is what we're calling community reserve areas. These are the areas that are in between the community areas and the rural areas. And what we would, we would like these areas to be community in, at some point in the future. But we know that there are some issues with getting water and sewer particularly to these areas in the short term. And so what we'd be looking at is looking at a transitional area where there may be municipal unpersons. But then there's potential for some sort of special redevelopment that we're getting. So again, looking at the Garner area. And if you could help out with the, the power, the laser point. We've got a large area of community reserve that's essentially in the middle creek area. And then we've got the identification of the area north of 42. That's a new area of rural, hasn't, isn't necessarily designated on the plan today. It definitely identified as an area that's hard to serve. But it, there wasn't necessarily a clear designation that we wanted something else to occur. And that would be something that we'd be in concert with Garner anyway to, to achieve. And then we also have, you know, as you all were talking about the 540 form. There's the larger area of community area. So the expectation is that that area would be something that would be worked with Garner to make sure that development in those areas are municipal as well. I'm going to now transition to tools that are basically going to be new county tools to help us do things that are from what are counting today. And designate them and just talked about move them to municipal in the future. Okay, so our key tools, I'm going to go into the top two a little bit for them. But the, the two, two tools are basically talking about how we handle the ETJ requirement specifically in the community walkable center areas. If you'll go back one slide. You go back one slide, please. I'm sorry. Okay, got it. Sorry. All right. Then we'll be talking about what we're calling the municipal transition stand. This is currently our traditional development, answer your touch. We'll be encouraging the municipal capital group ends, which I think is something you'll be covering in the item after this one. And then specifically, we'll talk about some new wave of small area plans that we can look at in these, these transition areas. As we look at that, that growth area at old stage road and NC 540, I think it would be good to, you know, put a little bit more flesh on exactly what that could be with the town to figure it out. Essentially, that's the things that will be the next step. So a little bit more details on them. These first two. These are, so y'all just have to refer on the seven criteria that we have in school. And as Mr. Riesberg and Jerome Liddy mentioned, part of the issue in the past, we're looking at how, judging the new ETJ against how you adopt the ETJ. And what this is trying to do is align this with the new thing. So the first ETJ advancement criteria is that the request should be in line with the development framework map. Meaning that it should be either a walkable center or a community area on the framework map. As we looked at in your, your community, that's a significant amount of land, particularly in the south and to the east. We're looking for a specific trend that's going on in the area that's essentially saying there's pressure in the area that would require municipal management. Essentially, this would mean that you could have either a new transportation project in the area, a new water, or a new line area, or potentially documented requests for development. Number three, we want to make sure the areas are joint point planned for from the initial point. This is particularly for the walkable center locations because as, as identified, it's extremely, you know, popular idea that we need to work harder to try to make sure that those areas are different than some of the other interchanges that have been developed. The fourth criteria, this builds on the criteria that are there today. That basically the municipality is ready to provide services, which we're bringing in a little bit to make sure that there's things related to police and fire and other things that are necessarily looked at. But typically, most municipalities have that concept. We're going to modify, I think that yours was one of the first ETJ requests, last time you did it, that did a significant amount of public engagement. We are now basically creating a criteria that shows what that dialogue means, the path of your business. And then the last criteria we're looking at is that there would be essentially a checklist that allows the municipality to say, overall, not necessarily in ETJ area, how is municipality helping to complete advanced goals that have, county white goals that have been identified? Okay, so next. So the key changes in the criteria is that again, we're not only perpetuating the track progress of ETJ annexation in ETJ because the annexation laws have changed. The ETJ would particularly require a comprehensive plan, a county comprehensive plan update and a small area plan update if, if this request for ETJ was outside of the community area. We're hoping that this process will encourage smaller and more frequent ETJ requests, basically based on your world, your receiving location with a corresponding relationship that would potentially make them a little less political because they're more tied to specifically, here's what we're seeing, here's why this works. We acknowledge, it acknowledges the, this engagement that it's already been doing. And then provides that checklist that gets at a lot of the, particularly from the county side saying, you know, this is a time commander, the commissioners have, that are pulling in, this faculty is doing it. The checklist is basically saying, is there a more regular check-in, the more regular ability to have a dialogue on how we're working together to achieve the broader goals. Now I'm going to transition to the municipal transition standards. And I think that as I go through this, it's really important for your area to think that this is actually potentially beyond what you all can do with ETJ right now. And this is potentially a tool that will be extremely, you know, popular. I'm trying to think of it. It will be extremely useful in your area. So currently, what we have is our transition from development standards that require credential development within a certain distance, be killed at mine, develop as a municipal. Our proposed MTS standard have a distance requirement, but also with ties to the development framework map. So essentially what this would say is, if you're located within 2,500 feet of a facility line, you would be required to tap on. But if you're in a community area or a walkable center area, you'd be required to go through the steps that are on the next slide list. And so essentially, this is requiring. One slide ahead of myself, I called this back. Yeah, so as, as I mentioned, the MTS standard, they require development that are incorporating in the walkable center areas and the community and the community reserve areas. And we're expecting that the MTS guidelines will be the results in a municipal development, which is Plan A in our preference, or a county municipal agreement, which is Plan B. Okay, so five. So how about, this would work mechanically is that if a property is located in these areas, they would be asked to go to municipality to have a municipal interest. Then we do an apples to apples comparison between what to develop in the municipality. In many cases, this is, you know, sewer expansion or expansion. And then we would compare that to the cost of developing county. And then the county and the municipality would get together specifically to have a meeting referring what the, the right solution location would be. And then for an official agreement, if, if, if and only if the municipal develop cannot be developed at that time. What we're looking at, these potential municipal county could do is essentially they could have three potential actions. So essentially that they just delay your restricted development until an infrastructure project is in place. You delay your restricted development in a specific timeframe. Or the county and the municipality choose to allow a development to occur in the county, but with some municipal standards. Just wanted to cover the fact that there's, the auto care, that there's going to be additional complexity in the walkable centers. Because these are going to require a little bit more infrastructure that we've worked with in the past. We're looking for them to be more clustered or connected. And that's one of the reasons that we want to get into some of the smaller planning. But the MTS standards apply and there is the same. Any questions at this point? With the last of my presentation, I'm going to cover very quickly some of the county tools that we're going to be trying to put in place to support rural. So these were alluded to, Mr. Maloney was talking in the back. One of the things we're looking between is modifying the county's, county subdivision standards to more equally keep with what the municipal development is doing. Essentially, the increasing counties' board existing, expanding lands, focusing on open space acquisition in this area. And focusing our small area planning to look at long-term stewardship of those little lands. Through conversations with municipalities, Through conversations with municipalities, we've had a lot of conversation about if municipalities identified that rural lands are important to its character, what should that municipality be doing? And one of the things through this plan is trying to suggest that we want the county to step up in those areas and become their resource for helping the municipality make Okay, so just a little more detail on the county subdivision standards. Some of the things that we're looking at initially doing is changing our, the minimum requirements, so that would be things like requiring street foundations to be correctly pegged up to be made, looking at some of our connectivity standards, requiring more connections in some locations, and then changing the open space expectations that are associated with the new county subdivision. The key for us, again, the county subdivisions are currently continually negatively with the county, with the municipal standards, and that the county subdivisions are approaching on those rural lands that we're saying that we want to, first of all. I'll quickly go through the performance tracking and how we're looking at that. This is going to have three different levels of performance metrics. Essentially, we have county-wide goals, development goals, and then target population goals. Okay, so the types of things that we may be looking at for county-wide is that basically we want to increase travel options and reduce our dependence over time. Again, that's one of the reasons the progressive walkability in both the transit focus areas for walkable centers, and encouraging you all to continue to push that in the community areas in character. Increasing population, decreasing population, encouraging severe housing problems. Again, this is one of those things that as we hope we should be able to create opportunities to fix some of these existing issues. We're likely to have an ample protected open space goal. That's going to be something that we're going to be in partnership with municipalities on. The development goals referenced on the slides for each of the different categories, and the fact that we're looking to have a, of the new population, we expect for a period of time, we're looking to have expectation, how much of those areas can develop in the populations. Along with that, we'll be creating mechanisms to monitor and help expand our tree canopy. And then the last, we want to make sure that we're looking at the center households that are hurt by the cost of house transportation, and infer that as we're going, we're creating more options. And then expanding access to services for rural populations related to our rural population that have been identified. So just quickly recapping where we're at on our plan, we're looking to present our, our draft early, early night of this fall, releasing it in public comp at that time, and looking to approval early next year. With that, Tim and I will both be available for any questions.
Okay, can I, can I jump into this point, Jeff? And I certainly give council members, this, this may seem like an off-the-wall question, but Tim, I noticed you talked about open space and walkable space. From time to time, we get inquiries from our citizens about the amount of reducing space for animal habitats and the destruction of those. Does your, does your plan, I don't think I heard you say anything about that, but I'm just curious to know if it has an element in it that talks about the wildlife that we have in Wake County, and what, if anything, we're doing to, to be sensitive to the destruction of the habitat of, of Seine?
Yeah, I think there's, there's going to always, there's going to be two prompts to that. One, when we identify those large rural areas on our map, those would become areas where we can potentially create large habitat areas. And then on a more micro level, trying to create opportunities within the urban areas and the urbanizing areas to, to continue to look at habitat as well.
So, well, and then, of course, I guess it's anticipated as you push things more towards municipalities that municipalities would, would share some or more of the burden to, to, to address those specific concerns as well.
At least on the, on the micro level, yeah. But that's not necessarily, so, so again, just, just make sure that we understand that there's the two sides of it, right? In that we're trying to maintain the larger areas outside of the municipalities. And then when you, we want to make sure that within the municipalities, there's, those are the opportunities, and again, that would become municipal.
That's fine, I didn't want to spend a lot of time on that, but at least wanted to hear you address that. So are you open to other questions now from my council?
I am.
Okay. I'll start over here, Mr. Vance, do you have any comments, questions at this point?
Not at this moment. There's a lot of the talk on the walkability centers, and it's a little, probably a little more complex than I think we realized. Do you have concrete examples of properly executed walkable centers in Wake County that we should be looking at as, not necessarily models, but kind of best practice examples of?
We have examples of good trends. It was interesting when we were going around and doing like a visual survey and taking some pictures of some locations, we were showing them to some of the planners, and they were like, oh, that's the one that we got close on, but we wanted to do this. And so there's definitely a, an evolving practice out there, what sort of regulations would need to be in place, and how we work with the development community to build those, those sorts of things. On a positive note, outside of retail, and I think this is something we just all need to be cognizant of, that the retail environment is, is just evolving nationally and internationally. But outside of retail, we've talked to a number of developers who say, you know, if, if we create these areas where this can occur, get the water and sewer support, then there's definitely a product there that can be constructed. And I think blending those two things between the, the regulations, expectations, and essentially the small planning, and then building that with the development community and what's actually constructible, I think there's, there's a good path way there.
One quick, other quick question, the mention of open space expectations and also maintaining tree canopy. Is there going to be any more guidance or instruction from the county level on modeling? Protecting tree canopy in open space can actually conflict sometimes. So if we have a hundred acres of trees, and then someone comes in and says, we're going to create open space in this development, and then as they tear down the trees and you just got an open field, that's not the same as, as tree canopy. So how, what are you, how are you using your definition of open space and reconciling that with tree canopy preservation?
Yeah, I think that to some extent, the clearest way to look at that is to make sure that we look at the two sides again. One is that you've got the rural areas where we're trying to make sure we're maintaining the large swaths of continuous tree canopy. And then on the municipal side, looking for the best practices in that. And again, I think you're right in the fact that there, there are some conflicts on that. But some of that relates to, you know, how you want to use your open space and whatnot there, and how much of that getting. But again, we're not holding, aside from the fact that, you know, from a street tree standpoint, and the, you know, urban cooling and everything like that, we want to see those trees in there, but again, in, in the municipal areas. But you're looking for different treatments in the areas that are identified as municipal versus the areas that are identified as rural and outside.
Yes, one question on regards to your slides on proposed municipal transition standards for development. You talked about all potential development areas coded as walkable center community and community reserve will have to follow the MTS guidelines, and these guidelines will result in a municipal development or county municipal agreement. So that, these will be with each individual municipality in the county in these areas that are marked as potential walkable or community or rural or whatever it may be, or community reserve, you'll be, the candidate will be working with each municipality for these development standards, or transition standards. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all for now.
And I think that's an important point, that as you all are thinking about that, that community area, and again, you'll be looking at it in the next, your next segment. And as you consider what areas you're, are trying to extend water and sewer into, there's going to be areas that we're noting as community that may not be your next ETJ area, which means that we're going to be asking to have that conversation, we're asking you to have that conversation with the development community, and just, we need to, we need to connect those dots.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff, I think that's all for now. Is she going to move to another phase or no?
This is it before we go into, into the water and sewer discussion.
I think, I think one of the goals, Mr. Mayor, was to, to make sure that there'd been some discussion about future ETJ expansion. And so part of the goals we had today was to make sure that, that council understood where the county was headed, and, and understood that there was going to be a new set of criteria and some new goals from the county. I think in the past, there's been some perception, whether it's perception or reality, that, that it was more of a, a chance of us getting things that we asked for. And I think part of the messaging we hope to bring forward today is the county is actually wanting to work toward getting all of the areas that are reasonable to be municipal within the municipal, giving us guidelines so that we can get those areas under our control. So we, we weren't here necessarily today to answer a specific question about a specific parcel of land, although I think we could get into some of those detailed discussions if you wanted to today, but it's really to help understand that the county's moving in a different direction than it's been in the past. And so as we have opportunities moving forward, we will very soon have new guidelines to be able to help us go after those, as, as you saw in one slide, even smaller ask at a time that's going to be preferred, to, to be able to make sure that we can manage some of these expansions.
I might just ask, I guess as, as Wake County has developed its plan and soon ready to present it to the commissioners apparently, can I assume that they have kept municipalities like ours or your department basically informed in terms of the issues they're addressing and what their plan's going to look like? So this doesn't, this doesn't catch you by surprise, I see?
No. Myself and David's group in particular have been involved in the process. We've had some input, provided some input and feedback on specific map area designations based on some of the stuff that we were probably more aware of than maybe the county staff was. So there's been a lot of give and take on that and input going back and forth.
Good.
And I also served on steering committee for this project. So the staff's been at technical level, and then I've been one of a, a number of community steering committee members that's been able to bring questions forward as well.
Good, thank you.
If I could add, Mr. Mayor, it's imperative that when county staff delivers a draft plan to the board commissioners, that we can demonstrate that we have included and involved each municipality at a very detailed level in this plan, and gain their support in moving this plan forward. The last thing I, I want to deliver is a plan that doesn't have municipal support, that doesn't do anything for Wake County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. As mentioned, we have included all planning staff at each municipality and at a manager level in some cases, so it's very, very important to us in, in moving forward. The lines that you see on that growth framework map are to a parcel level. And that parcel level of those lines were done in collaboration with each municipal planning jurisdiction. And in fact, we are still having town planners to have scour those parcel lines to make sure that we got it correct, because we don't want to cut out anything that you feel at some point should be a community now rather than rural now. Very important to us. We want to make sure that there's buy-in from the beginning.
Good, thank you, thank you. Okay, anything else from council on this?
Quick question for Mr. Trezenberg. What interplay do you see between this plan and its objectives and the UDO rewrite we're undertaking? Are there opportunities to bring certain elements into that process proactively?
Absolutely. I think, you know, a lot of, a lot of what they're coming up with, it provides additional evidence and support for certain things that we have kind of already identified we want to look at, such as our tree canopy requirements and how our open spaces is defined. Open space is a, is a big one that every community struggles with how they want to define it, because it does kind of have two different purposes in most cases. There, there is that recreational component, which, as you noted, can compete with the tree canopy requirement versus open space that is just there for the sake of being open space. So if, if nothing else, I think it's kind of given us a little of, little additional feedback and additional support for some of those items that we're looking at, and that's certainly good input to have and backup for, hey, this is why we're talking about these items.
Okay, I want to be sensitive to the time, and go ahead.
I think, I remember Matthew.
One comment, Mr. Mayor, if I could. You know, 540, the southern loops all coming through, and it's most certainly intersecting with some of our Q roads, i.e. 401, Old Stage Road, as well as Highway 50. And from what I've seen everywhere it's gone before, that really opens that, those areas up for development. And that's going on right now. And that's why it really brought a lot, is to my attention, on the ETJs and preparations for that. I know we talked to staff and I talked with John, and so what concern of mine was infrastructure under those roads, and he showed we're, that we are.
That's our next segment.
So we're going to talk about that, okay? But I, I like to plan outside the box, don't put a, a southern loop in and say, my God, we should have put that, done this and done that and done that. Now's the time to be thinking about it. So I just want to make sure that does not get by us as we go into this planning stage here. And I know we're going to talk about it a little more in detail, and I know you guys with the county are going to be looking at. So good to have you down here, by the way, it's good to see you again.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Really quick in your comment, yes, the corridor, NC 540, is a critical aspect of this plan. In fact, when you look at all of Wake County, that is a focus area, because we know what that will be an impetus for. It's going to generate growth, and a lot of that is in county jurisdiction right now. It doesn't need to be there. We, we need to, we need to promote development to the urban municipality, primarily garner in, in most of that corridor, to make sure that the, the development can, can be what we all envisioned it to be.
Got you, thank you.
And Mr. Matthews, if you look, you've got a handout of the slides today, but on page nine, the top slide is slide number 17. And Jeff, I don't know if Jeff can get to the slides, we're going to have to pull it back up, but just as a, just to support what, what Tim was just saying, if you notice, those key areas that you were just talking about are coded in purple there, and purple being walkable centers, which we, Tim spent some time talking with us about, Jeff, I don't know if you can blow that up so we can just, yeah, see right there. So those key areas that you're really talking about are all colored in purple there, and, so then we're going to have the, the support from Wake County and the guidance from Wake County of how to be able to plan for those walkable centers and bring them into, to our area. So all the way around there where there's, there's land opportunities, Wake County's planning the same way that we're desiring to expand.
Well, I had known years ago when I was downtown that the county was looking at encouraging municipalities to pick up more and more of this for just what you were talking about. So I'm glad that's still on, and I think it's a great idea. And I think Fuqua is taking it very seriously, so you can take it from there, because any road I go through down through the country, I can be on a dirt road, and all of a sudden there's the Fuqua ETJ. They must have mass-produced those signs, because they've got them everywhere. And I'm thinking, there's some reason they're doing that, and I just want to make sure we don't get caught blindsided. So thanks, sir. Appreciate, and none of you guys are going to continue doing that, that's great.
I hadn't planned to open this up to the audience in general. There's not many people that aren't here officially as part of this, but I do recognize a former council member, Mr. Buck Kennedy, and appreciate him coming out, and I was going to give him an opportunity. He may be here on some other matters, but is there anything you wanted to pose a question about at this time, Mr. Kennedy? is there anything you wanted to pose a question about at this time, Mr. Kennedy?
Carry on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're ready to move along then, right?
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Tim.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Tim. I think that's all for now.
And, yeah, I'm out of the area. Chris Johnson is next.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just while we're transitioning, I just want, we thank Tim and Tim and the, some of other of Tim's staff was on the, the team's calls well today. But we really do appreciate them coming out ahead of their regular schedule to bring this to council. It just seemed like very timely to bring this to y'all with some of the questions we had had. And we appreciate them carving out some time in the schedule. They had for a pretty massive project to, to work this into their, their timing so they could bring it and share it with you. For us right now, so thanks very much for that.
Yeah, well, excuse me, well-stated, John. And I've seen Tim around some meetings, haven't seen him in a while, but it's good to see you again. And thank you for the good work you do over there. Keep up the good cooperation, I know you will. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Johnson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Yeah, this is an item that we've had some updates. We've been working over the past 18 months or so since we first met with, had meetings with, between the Town of Garner, DOT, Turnpike Authority, and our partners with Raleigh Water. We've been working with them to, again, try to extend, look, look for opportunities to extend our water and sewer services to the southern area of our ETJ in a, in a conjunction with the under-construction 540 project, R 2828. So we started, we reached out to them, I think in March of last year for the first time and, and started that discussion. We've had a lot of productive meetings, a lot of email correspondence, a lot of meetings face-to-face between the town and DOT, their design build contractor who's working on the project. And of course, they're also not, just, not just water and sewer, but they're also coordinating with all the private utility companies through the air for gas and everything else. So we've had a lot of back and forth, some design scenarios and some alterations. And it's kind of been kind of a back and forth over the last probably eight, eight months or so. You may remember, we had, the Wooton Company had done a master utility plan study for the Town of Garner several years ago. And the Wooton Company also is a common firm that works on call with the city of Raleigh as well. So Raleigh Water procured the Wooton Company to try to do some more fine detailed design of those future service extensions so that we could come up with the best locations to provide either encasements for water lines or gravity sewer extensions or force mains. So I'm just going to kind of show you the, the areas that we've got that was in your backup packet and go over those locations real briefly at a high level.
Can you collapse your menu on the right just to declutter the screen just a little, that right, that arrow midway down the?
Oh, you point this?
Uh, in the middle. Well, you can do that.
Halfway down.
Right there, right there.
Got you.
And then you can also minimize the team's meeting just in case it's in the way. Thank you.
Yep. So starting at the, and, and just a reiteration, the 540 corridor is broken up into three different sections. There's the 2721A over at 55. It goes over to Pierce Olive Road. R 2721B goes from Pierce Olive to 401. And then the project that we're mostly coordinating, R 2828, starts at 401 and, and ends at I-40. So all those three sections are supposed to be open to traffic around the year 2023 based on the current schedule. So starting at the west end of R 2828, our first crossing was going to be at the Fannie Brown Road intersection. And what we are proposing is to install a 12-inch fusible PVC water line along the west side of Fannie Brown Road. And then just east of there, we had hoped that we would be able to put in a encasement of some sort for gravity sewer. But unfortunately, all three of the gravity sewer are going to have to be handled by a future boring. And that has to do with several reasons, one being environmental permitting with the DOT is already mostly completed and, and a couple of these would really impact that permit. But there are also the, there are a lot of risks with installing these gravity sewer lines at such a great depth for future lines to be threaded through them, there, there becomes a risk of either settling or the, the line not being in the proper locate, horizontal or vertical location, that I think it was agreed all around that it was probably safer, less risk to go ahead and handle those in the future by borers. But we are proposing for a future bore of a 36-inch encasement, or I believe it's an 18-inch transmission sewer main to cross there, and that's Panther Branch. So then moving further to the east, the next intersection is at Old Stage Road. Again, we're proposing another 12-inch water line, fusible PVC again. We're putting in some encasements at the ramps on each side. And then as well as a encasement underneath 540. Then just east of Old Stage Road, this is, I believe, Little Creek. And again, we'll, we'll plan to have a future sewer boring at such time that the sewer gets extended and we'll have an agreement with DOT so that we can get back in there and do that work. At Holland Church Road, we're also planning another 12-inch fusible PVC line. Again, another encasement's going to be needed underneath the 540, but we do not have any ramps at that location, although there is a frontage road on the south side that we will cross as well.
Chris, can you, can you explain what the encasement does for us versus just having the pipe?
Yeah, and most of these are fusible PVC. I was talking to Robert about this beforehand, it's like the fusible PVC does not have joints can be put in by bore or, or stretched in. But the encasements are, are there just for protection. They're usually about twice the size of the main that you're actually installing and they're there to provide additional protection where you have your main crossings with the street.
So the water lines going through the encasement?
Water lines going through the encasement.
Parallel, okay.
That's right.
You were speaking of sewer here, I'm hearing water.
This was water.
Water.
Okay, yeah. But, but they, they can apply to either.
So that encasement can handle both at the same time?
Yeah, and these, and these are, all, all of these are planned to be for water that are getting done in court, in conjunction with the 540. The only sewer is what will be bored at a later date for the gravity mains. And then we've got one force main at the last intersection that I haven't gotten to that's for, that'll be handled like the water mains, but it'll be for a force main. We don't have any plans at Saul's Road at this time, but that, that was not on the master plan as a priority area. And I think basically with, with the other 12-inch lines we've got, we can make connections on the south side in those areas. Main thing is we're getting these looped areas to provide the, the pressure and capacity that we need on the south side of 40.
Chris, I think you went past one green, one sewer encasement.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yep, yep, that's a, that's the, the last sewer encasement. Guffey Branch is where that's located. So another future boring for gravity sewer. And then the last intersection at Highway 50, this is where we have both a water line and a proposed force main. So it'll be a 24-inch fusible PVC water line, again, with encasements underneath the, the main six-lane section, as well as at the two ramps on either side of the interchange. And then we've also got a 8-inch fusible PVC force main. And basically, if you kind of think about it, all these other gravity sewer that will be allowing future sewer extensions to the south will kind of be routed back up 50 through the force main towards the, the, the water treatment plant. So we'll have an 8-inch line with 16-inch steel encasements, again, at, at the ramps and the, the six-lane section. And so what we've got now, we have just finished the designs. Like I said, we've been going back and forth with DOT for several months. We've provided them the final designs and now we are waiting for DOT to coordinate with their design build contractor. One question that we've got remaining is how much is all this going to cost? So as soon as we get that information, we'll be working to try to come up with an agreement between, I guess it'd be Raleigh Water and the DOT, since they're the owner-operator of the system. And hopefully we'll be able to find a means to, to address all these locations that we've got. But certainly we've got to find out what the costs are going to be before we know exactly what can be addressed.
Chris, on your, on your future bores, you had mentioned that those were areas that we had hoped to be able to put encasements in, but because of several reasons, it didn't seem prudent to do that. We, I do believe, I understand, I think though, that we are able to sort of codify those locations in an agreement.
Right.
By which we would not have to come back and ask permission to do those in the future. So while it's not, it's not getting the encasements in, we are getting the agreements in place to be able to go back to those locations to do the bores, is that?
That's correct. So the, the agreement will cover both the agreement that allows DOT to build the crossings that we do have incorporated in their project, as well as an agreement to reserve that area for those other three gravity sewer extensions in the future. So they wouldn't have to go through another range of permitting or permission. So we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, council? Any questions on this end down here?
Another question. What sort of the maximum density of development that this capacity can provide?
That one's going to be one I might have to give my counterpart over here for, but the, with a, with a transmission main, like these are all going to be 30, are you talking about sewer or you're referring to both, I guess?
Both, because I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, with the sewer, the, the, those are main trunk lines for gravity sewer. 18-inch transmission mains can pretty much handle, I would think, anything within the Town of Garner in those basins. The 12-inch water lines, that's, that's pretty much what we typically have along most of our distribution, major thoroughfares and, and minor highways. So there's, this isn't necessarily the only water we have around there. I know that, that Raleigh Water's currently working on a, the Oregon Transmission Main project and some other things that kind of move water between areas for capacity. But 12-inch water line is usually what we would have along all of our major arterials around the corner. So it should handle all the, as far as I know, it should handle all the future capacity of those, those areas.
So even if there were a development that was more vertical and densely, one of these sort of walkable centers?
Right, yeah. As far as I know, this, this would handle it. Anything you'd like to add to that, Robert?
Like, like Chris said, a 12-inch water main is, is pretty much our typical grid. And water mains are different than sewer mains is you don't just run in, run in one direction. We typically will grid our water mains so that we've got a, a robust grid. So you don't rely on one pipe necessarily. Sewer, a little bit different, you need to make sure you get that main trunk line the right size. And we have master planned this area for the last two years to try to figure out how we're going to serve the south side of, of I-540 and all the interchanges. So we've been working with planning staff and your engineers on what is your expected density in these areas and what size pipes would we need to do that? So I'm confident that we're setting you up for success in the future, well down the road.
Thank you.
Any other questions this way for Chris?
Just glad to see it that we're proactive here and, like, you've got a good game plan. It's interesting, the others, just you're putting the trunks under for, not necessarily intersection, I hadn't thought about that, but you're right, there's other roads and you got to get through to it. So now's the time to do it, but that looks good, great job, great job.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question.
Yes.
In reference to the planning process for the water and sewer, in reference to the planning process for the water and sewer, did you use, I'm assuming you used the current plans that we, current growth plans that we have for the Town of Garner and incorporate it into that planning process to determine the, the, the type of facility that'd be necessary to fulfill our future needs?
Yeah, I believe that was the purpose of the previous study that was performed by the Wooton Company years back, and that was to provide the future sizing and location of those mains to serve those future areas. And this kind of just piggybacked on top of that effort.
Got you, okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, I was going to introduce our next guest, and we've already called him up to answer questions before we got a chance to formally introduce him. So Robert Massengill, the director of Raleigh Water, formerly known to, to many of us as Raleigh, Raleigh Public Utilities, is here with us today. We, we had asked him to, we're planning to have him come around this time just to give us his update on the state of his, the utility that, that we're a partner of, but we thought it dovetailed nicely into the discussion. We were having it about some of the growth things so that he could be here to hear the discussion, the questions you had, and then answer questions about things like the ones that we just had there. Also, Jason Waters, who's a Garner resident, who's been served on several boards and, and studies our comprehensive plan, is with us today. He is a member of Robert's staff and he's joining us as well today. So good to have you out today. So Robert, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Welcome, Robert. And I'll acknowledge Mr. Jason out there as well. He's a fellow Rotarian of mine, so it's good to see you, sir.
All right, well, thank you, and I'm glad Jason was able to come to today too. Mayor, City Council, or Town Council, thank you for having me here today. I've got to adjust my terminology just a little bit. My name's Robert Massengill. As John said, I'm the utilities director for the city of Raleigh. We rebranded last year to Raleigh Water, so you'll see Raleigh Water throughout our slides. Before I start today, I would like to start out by expressing condolences for the loss of former mayor Ronnie Williams. He will be missed. Here's our agenda for today. I'll provide some background on the utility mergers in general. I'll provide a little general information about the utility system. We'll go over some of our accomplishments from this past year. We'll review where you are with your water and sewer allocations, show you some of the capital improvements projects that we have planned for the Garner, Garner area. We'll talk about the utility rates, have a discussion about the impacts of COVID-19 on our utility customers, and then I'll wrap up with a brief message about, about the value of water. I usually like to start out a presentation with a little brain teaser, something to make you think as I go through the presentation today. And so what I'd like for you to think about is how much does a gallon of tap water cost our average customer? And our average customer uses about five CCF. A CCF is a hundred cubic feet. Both water and sewer service delivered to the house and taken away per gallon. I'll give you the answer at the end, but I'll give you a chance to guess too, if you'd like. Okay, let's talk about the utility mergers in general. We are a regional utility. We serve approximately 570,000 folks in Raleigh, Garner, Roseville, Wake Forest, Knightdale, Wendell, and Zebulon. The mergers occurred between 2000 and 2007, with Garner's being the first utility merger that occurred in 2000. And the purpose of the utility mergers was to address the same issues that many small utilities are facing across the state today. Rising cost of operations, addressing aging infrastructure, and continuing to address your growth needs and all the costs that goes along with your growth. Under the framework of the utility mergers, capital improvements projects were identified to bring the town's system up to the same standard as Raleigh's system, with the understanding that Raleigh's system was not perfect either. Some examples of some capital improvements that were constructed as part of the merger were installation of generators and SCADA connections at wastewater pump stations. And we did several water main replacements, some sewer main replacements, and even upsized some water and sewer lines as part of the utility mergers. Some of the merger towns even purchased additional allocations as part of the merger, and they also brought over utility debt to the mergers when they came in to merge with Raleigh. And all of these costs called merger-related costs were recovered over time through the rate differential between the town's rates and Raleigh's rates. You may recall at the time of the mergers, some of you were, many of you were probably around, is that Raleigh had extremely low rates and most of the merger communities had reasonably high rates. And so the differential was significant. And a lot of things happened between them with droughts and even economic recessions, but still we were able to achieve a full merger. So after the merger debt is paid down, all the customers are switched to system-wide rates. We called it Raleigh rates originally, we'll call it system-wide rates now. That happened in Garner in 2008, so all the Garner customers switched to the same rates as Raleigh in 2008. Roseville, Wake Forest, and Knightdale have also switched to Raleigh rates as they've retired their debt and, and completed their mergers. We still have Wendell and Zebulon out there, yet to complete their mergers, but they're projected to close out in fiscal year '22 and '23. They were working with both of those towns to try to find ways to get their debt paid off quicker and get them switched to the system-wide rates, hopefully in this fiscal year, but we'll see. year, but we'll see. You'll see in a moment that the merger agreement also provides for automatic annual compounded growth in your water and sewer capacity allocations at no additional cost. So getting on to some general information about the utility system, our customers use about 50 million gallons a day. You may hear me say MGD today, that's million gallons a day. We use a lot of acronyms. You can see the number of Olympic-sized pools we could fill up each day. The Garner customers use about 2.3 million gallons a day, which is just under 5% of the system usage. This, this chart shows the makeup of our customer base. We have about 200,000 accounts, 93% are residential, who use about 47% of the water. In Garner, we have just over 11,000 utility accounts. This map shows the location of our major treatment facilities and our interconnections with our neighbors. I'll start out with some, some of our resiliency efforts. We have emergency interconnections with Durham, up near Briar Creek. We have interconnections with Cary, and we have an emergency interconnection with Johnston County down on Highway 70 toward Clayton, as well as one over toward Wendell. We have a, a peak treatment capacity of 100 million gallons a day. And this shot is a shot of our En Johnson Water Treatment Plant. It's our large plant. It has a treatment capacity of 86 MGD. You can see Falls and Neush Road over on the right-hand side, if you've ever been up that way. If you look over into the plant, you can see the solar array that sits on top of the Clear Well. That's a .25 megawatt solar array that we, we generate renewable energy there at the plant. The plant was built in 1967, so it's got some, some age on it, although not quite as much as me, so it's not that old. And we get our, our raw water from Falls Lake. If you look in the picture in the background, you can see a fog bank in the back in the upper-left corner. That is Falls Lake where the raw water that supplies this water plant comes from. And right now, we have several current projects ongoing to rehab and expand the 53-year-old plant. We have a second water treatment plant down on the south side of the service area here in Garner, called the Dempsey E Benton Treatment Plant, or we call the D E Benton Plant. It was placed in service in 2010, as most of you probably remember. It has a treatment capacity of 14 million gallons a day. It serves all of Garner, as well as the southern portions of Raleigh, including downtown. So when I'm downtown, I'm drinking Benton Plant Water, which is very good water. We, we do have good water. And it gets its, it gets its raw water from Lakes Benson and Wheeler. You can see Lake Benson in the background there. We're able to control the level of the lake in Lake Wheeler so that we can keep Lake Benson as full as possible when we're pulling our water supply through there. On the sewer side of the house, we have three wastewater treatment plants with a combined treatment capacity of 80.2 MGD. Up in Wake Forest, we have the Smith Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, which is a three-MGD facility. Over in Zebulon, we have the Little Creek Plant, which is a 2.2 MGD facility. Both of those assets came over as part of the utility mergers with Wake Forest and Zebulon. And then along the Neush River, near the Johnston County line, we have our large treatment plant, which we call the Neush River Resource Recovery Facility. And it is a 75 MGD facility. We've just completed the expansion in the last couple of years to take it up to 75 million gallons a day. The name of the facility, Resource Recovery Facility, reflects that we do a whole lot more than just treat sewer there. We use bio-solids for fertilizers, soil amendments, and composting. We use the reuse water for irrigation, toilet flushing, and cooling water in chillers. We grow sunflowers around the, in the fields that surround the plant, and we use the seed oil to generate biodiesel to use in the farm equipment. There's also a 1.3 megawatt solar array on the plant site that we generate renewable energy. Right now, we really have a, an exciting, and you hardly ever hear the word "exciting" in wastewater project tied into the same sentence, but this really is exciting for us. We have an exciting project to build new anaerobic digesters at the plant, and we're calling it the Bioenergy Recovery Project. And, and this project will not only reduce the volume of the bio-solids generated from the treatment process significantly, but will also generate methane gas, which we plan to come, to clean to compress natural gas standards and use to fuel the city's bus fleet, some of the same buses that come to Garner, some of the Go Triangle buses that come to Garner and take folks back and forth. It's a really exciting project, at least for, for folks like me. So it is, it's under construction right now, and it's expected to be complete and operational by 2027, 2023. So just a little bit more about our assets. We have about 2,400 miles of water mains, about the same amount of gravity sewer mains, 73,000 water valves, 23,000 hydrants, 26 water storage tanks, and 125 pump stations. Those are sewer pump stations. In Garner, we have 212 miles of water mains, 183 miles of gravity sewer mains, over 5,000 water valves, almost 1,700 fire hydrants, two elevated tanks, and 17 of those sewer pump stations. And I like to use this graphic to illustrate just how much pipe we have in the ground. We have enough water main to take us all the way to Las Vegas and enough gravity sewer to bring us all the way back home. So, so next, I'll cover some of our accomplishments for this past year. We maintained 100% compliance at all five of our treatment facilities this past year. And you can see the, the number of consecutive years in a row there beside each one of the facilities. And this is a big deal. It's really a big deal for us because there are thousands of opportunities to miss compliance every year, thousands of opportunities. Just one sampling could, could miss compliance and blow 100%, especially while these plants are under construction, which all five of these have been in various states of construction during this whole period that you see these numbers of years here. So this is a really significant accomplishment, and we owe the success partially to our capital investments, but primarily to the hard work and dedication of our staff who are out there taking care and getting the job done every day. We also maintain one of the lowest sanitary sewer overflow rates, or SSO, not one of my acronyms, one of the lowest SSO rates in the nation. At our 12-month average is 1.42 SSOs per 100 miles of pipe, and we use the 100 miles of pipe comparison, so we compare large systems with small systems when you use that metric. And as you see there on the slide, 1.42 SSOs per 100 miles compares very favorably to the national and southeast average of four and seven, respectively. And we owe that success to our preventive maintenance sewer cleaning efforts, the fats, oils, and grease program, where we work with our restaurants and other grease providers, our asset management program, where we're looking for problems and replacing those pipes before they fail, like one I'm going to tell you about on Garner Road in a little while, and our outreach efforts, like things like, the things you, the graphics you see on the side of our flush trucks, reminding our customers not to put grease or wipes down the drain, some of our outreach efforts. We attribute all of that success to those. And while we're talking about grease and flush wipes, I wouldn't want to pass up an opportunity to remind our customers that only human waste and toilet paper are supposed to go in the sewer system. Flushed wipes, some people call them flushable wipes. When combined with grease, they create clogs and generate sanitary sewer overflow, which is something that we really do not want to happen. We want to protect our environment. So there was my shameless plugs to keep grease and wipes out of the system. Moving over to the capital improvement side, we have master planning documents for every component of the utility system, which we use to plan for the growth of the entire service area, including Garner. As I mentioned a moment ago, we've been looking at how we're going to serve the south side of I-540 and all the interchanges for at least the last couple of years with wastewater master plans. All of that's been, been factored into this, and, and that's our problem. We're your utility, so we, it's up to us to coordinate with DOT when things like this are done. We're fortunate to have engineers and planning staff on your town that are willing and capable of helping us, but that's part of what we do. We're planning for your growth as well as the whole rest of the service area. So we do have some capital improvements projects planned in the Garner area. I'll go over some of the current projects first. On Lake Drive, we have been collaborating with the town to replace the old water main that's in Lake Drive ahead, or actually in conjunction with your street resurfacing or street improvements project, and that project is designed, awaiting to go to construction. I mentioned a moment ago, over on Garner Road, we have about 5,000 feet of eight-inch concrete sewer pipe that is in terrible condition. We CCTV'd it, closed-circuit television, ran a camera up the line, and we found numerous defects, so we're fast-tracking that design. That section of pipe is in the vicinity of Main Street, Garner in the vicinity of Main Street. It is unusual to see concrete pipe that small. Typically, we see clay pipe, ductile iron or PVC pipe, and hydrogen sulfide really attacks concrete. And so we're not surprised that we're seeing failure there. We're a little surprised at that pipe material, but we're, we're taking care of it. That's one of the projects that you'll see, and if you will pardon the disruption while we're in there taking care of that, we're trying to replace that before it fails. We've got a project that was just bid and awarded by city council and will go to construction in just a few months called the Oregon Trail Hebron Church Road 24-In Transmission Main. That, that, and you'll, you'll hear about some future projects as well in just a second, but what we're doing is we're putting the transmission water infrastructure in to help convey water to the southern and eastern portions of the service area out of the Benton Plant. So the Benton Plant is, is a key component in our utility system. And we have several NC DOT projects where we're required to mitigate utility conflicts, including projects to improve I-540, I-40, US-401. There's a bridge replacement on Raynor Road at White Oak Creek and the US-70, I mean, the NC-50 Bridge at US-70 as well. We're coordinating with those conflicts as well. We have several future projects planned that will be going to design in the range of 2024, 2025, including a couple of additional water transmission main projects that I mentioned over on New Bethel Church Road, Hebron Church Road, and then a large 42-inch transmission main over on John Sausage Road, and those will be down the road in about five years. It'll be longer than that before you'll actually see construction, but we'll start designing in about five years. We also plan to rehab and expand the White Oak Pump Station, which is the pump station located on White Oak Creek at Raynor Road to stay ahead of growth. And we're planning to replace the Reedy Creek Sewer Interceptor as well to stay ahead of growth here in Garner. And we have several projects planned within the fence at the Benton Plant. We have a project to, for residuals de-watering facility. We're a project to enhance our corrosion control and a project to build a new 100-million-gallons raw water reservoir on the plant site on the property that we purchased just a few years back at the intersection of Highway 50 and New Bethel Church Road. So I'm sure, before I move on, are there any questions?
I have one. Mr. Massengill, what alerted you all to the need for the pipes to be, or the changes to be done on Garner Road? What was the mitigating factor?
Part of our routine sewer cleaning and CCTV and closed-circuit TV routinely, we're going out, it's part of our asset management program. We're going out and looking for trouble, basically, with our closed-circuit televisions, and of course, the more you look, the more you find. So we were doing that earlier this year, and we identified several defects in that. So we're actively, aggressively going out and looking for trouble.
And how often, what kind of schedule is that as far as looking for problems?
Well, it's going on every day in our asset management program. What we're doing is trying to look at the assets that are more likely to be in, in poor condition based on age, so that's one of the criteria that we use to start. We wouldn't go into a new subdivision and look at condition assessment on a new subdivision because we don't need to, but some of those pipes over in the Main Street area have been in the ground quite a while.
Oh, I know.
And so, you know, it was an area that we needed to focus on.
Thank you.
Robert, I agree. Go ahead.
Massengill, you mentioned the expansion of the Benton Water Plant, also the upgrades the lines on New Bethel and Hebron Church and the Oregon Trail, which here's over the 2025 or maybe later. So that's when there'll be an expansion of the Benton Water Plant, am I understanding that correctly?
Not quite at that time. The Benton Plant is, I do not think the Benton Plant expansion is in the 10-year CIP right now. We still have plenty of capacity in that plant. We're, we have a, a peak of 14. We typically operate that plant at about 8 million gallons a day, eight to 10, and run it steady, and then we use the large plant up on the north side to, to adjust for the peaks. So we still have additional capacity in the Benton Plant to use.
This probably is not tied directly, it isn't, but when we did the merger, I was on the board back then, and the first time, and we had the aeration facility out that, up east. Whatever happened to all that? Did Raleigh do anything with it, or is it just shut down?
With the Ren Road facility?
Mm-hmm.
We, we are utilizing the Ren Road facility right now. We converted it from a domestic waste treatment lagoon system and spray irrigation system like was being used for Garner. And what we do is we send the residuals from the water treatment process, which is not a domestic waste, it's the, it's the water with turbidity in it that you need to let the, the solids settle out, so we'll send those over to the lagoon, and the solids will settle out in the lagoons, and then we spray the water on the fields out there.
So you're still utilizing?
We are utilizing that facility, yes, sir.
Okay, I'm just curious.
Robert, occasionally I'll hear citizens talk about concerns, particularly, I guess, in drought conditions, when the Lake Benson gets down, gets down to a low level, but I believe I heard you say you can control some, or you do, I guess, from Lake Wheeler, you can control the, the lake level or capacity there, is that right?
That is right, and a few years back, we pulled Lake Wheeler down pretty hard to keep water in Benson so we could continue to provide water out of the Benton Plant.
Mr. Massengill, Mr. Massengill, in reference to the reservoir that's currently being in the planning process for the Benson Plant, did I hear you say that it's not in the 10-year CIP, the capital improvement plan?
Expansion of the plant is not, but building a terminal reservoir to put, so it's a wide spot. We pump water out of the lake into the reservoir, and then it would provide us some buffer for drought conditions and things like that, and then we would feed it into the plant from there.
Understand, and, and I know that it's very close to NC-50 and New Bethel Church Road, so it'd be very close proximity. Will there be any type of public engagement activity on that one?
Very, yes, very likely there will be, and we certainly will include you and make sure that you're aware of what's going on with that. We know that there are neighbors across, near the park that have had interest when there was other development that was proposed to go there a few years back, so we're, we're aware of the concerns.
And I believe we have an agreement to have a walking trail and maybe use a small part of that property for parking, excess parking, too, I believe.
For, for the park?
For the park, yeah, for Centennial Park, yes.
You, you, I guess, the, the water, Raleigh Water, I'm sorry, I've forgotten what the name was, but anyway, you, you stay on sort of a cyclical cycle of replacing old water lines? I'm recalling that you made a presentation at a Rotary Club I was at a few years ago, and I, I'm recalling, I think you, there's some, there's some water lines in the ground that was approaching 100 years old, or maybe are still.
We do, in downtown Raleigh, near City Market, if you know where City Market is, right in downtown, we've got a 14-inch water main that is 1890's vintage, and it is still in service and still okay. And then other places in the service area, we have water mains that are not 50 years old, and we're having to, to replace them or do repairs on them. But what we're doing is we're looking at what our most critical assets are, trying to do condition assessment on them first, and if their condition's good, we move to a less critical assets and do critical, condition assessment on them, and then start addressing the most critical ones first.
One more question. Back to the, the sewer lines that are being replaced, could problems with those lines cause sewer smells in people's homes? problems with those lines cause sewer smells in people's homes?
Do problems with the line cause sewer smells?
Sewer smells within residences. I've had some complaints from people.
They should not. The way plumbing is designed, there are traps, P-traps on all fixtures that are supposed to retain water to keep the sewer gas from traveling back up the sewer surface to get inside the house. If you had a room that you didn't use, say, laundry room or something, if it had a floor drain and that floor drain dried up and there were no water in that P-trap, you could get odors back in the house, but not typically, unless we're having a backup or sewer overflow and they're smelling it from where the overflow is coming from.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, that's a good segue to move right into where you are with your water and sewer allocations. I'm sure you're all interested in that. And this chart, this graph shows your water capacity. Your sewer capacity is very similar, so I'm just showing your, your water capacity today. The top line that you see, the blue line, is the capacity that you have, and the bottom dashed green line is the actual usage. And as a reminder, the merger agreement provides for automatic annual growth in your water and sewer allocations. After the first five years of the merger, your allocation grew at 4% annually for 10 years until 2015. And then 3% compounded annually for the next 10 years, or it will continue to compound at that until 2025, after which it will continue to grow at Raleigh's demand growth rate. So you will continually have growing allocation over time without having to make any additional purchases. So based on running the numbers at the end of fiscal year 2020, you're in good shape on your allocations. You actually have enough excess capacity to accommodate over 44,000 homes today, and that's based on what we're seeing for an average home using. So, to me, you look like you're in really good shape, as well as most all the merger towns are in good shape with their capacities. We just had our utility advisory board meeting. John, I think that was last month, and we provided all the towns with spreadsheets and, and more detailed information on your allocations. So I'll move on to utility rates, if there's no questions. When we met with our city council this year, we demonstrated that we can meet our operational and capital improvements funding needs and exceed our financial goals for debt coverage ratios and fund balance with no rate increase for this current fiscal year that we're in. So, city council approved no rate increase this year. And this chart shows our current charges for 5/8-meter residential customer. And I'll, I'll go over them really quickly here. On the water side, on the water side, we have a base charge and an infrastructure charge, and those are flat set for 5/8-meter. Usage is built on tiers. Tier one goes through zero to four CCF and is paid at that unit price. Tier two is from five, now at 20 CCF. It was previously at 10 CCF. I'll tell you about that in a moment. And that's built at that unit price. And then tier, tier three currently is everything above 20 CCF. We also have a watershed protection fee to help with conservation of our watershed in Falls Lake and in Swift Creek, that's based on volumetric charge. On the sewer side, we have a base charge and an infrastructure replacement charge, as well as the usage charge, which is a uniform volumetric. It is not tiered. And the infrastructure charges that you see on water and sewer, those are where we're generating the revenue to, to, to replace our pipes that are aging, to replace the pipe out on Garner Road that is failing. This chart shows how we compare with our peers. We get this information from the Environmental Finance Center at UNC. And over the last few years, you can see, we're very, we're very competitive. And over the last few years, we have actually shifted a couple of blocks to the left as we've started to see our peers deal with their aging infrastructure and having to increase their rates to deal with some of that. So we have very reasonable rates, especially compared to our peers. Okay, next, I would like to discuss the impacts of the pandemic on our customers. When COVID-19 started impacting our area, we suspended disconnects, late fees, and we reconnected all previously disconnected accounts on March 12. Governor Cooper subsequently issued Executive Order 124 on, on March 31, requiring all the other utilities in the state to basically do the same thing, which was extended till July 30 with Executive Order 142. And while we're currently allowed to disconnect water service for non-payment, we're deferring that action till later in the year. We want to give our impacted customers more time to get back on their feet before we start implementing the disconnects for non-payment. As you may recall, I talked about the tiers a moment ago and the shift between, in tier two and tier three. On April 7, our city council approved a temporary adjustment of the tier threshold between tier two and tier three of our single-family residential rates from 10 CCF to 20 CCF. And that was to recognize the shift that we were seeing as businesses were closed and were not using much water, but people were staying at home. So we were seeing our single-family residents use a lot more water, and we knew there were going to be significant impacts on those folks as they got into tier three, which normally they would not do. But when you have a husband and wife both working at home, and then all the kids at home doing school or in the summertime, water usage for our single-family residential has gone up significantly. So, we saw this happening, and we made that adjustment, and it will stay in, in effect until Wake County proclaims the end of the state emergency. We'll, we'll make this shift back to 10 CCF within 30 days after they released the declaration of emergency. And that's when we're starting to see people come back to where, there's not as many people stay at home. We don't think we're going to see our single-family residential who normally don't get into tier three. You know, we don't want to see them continue to get into tier three if they not, normally would not do that. This is a screenshot of the dashboard showing our current past due amount for the entire service area. And I know the numbers are sort of small there, but what it's basically showing is that we have past due accounts now totaling about $8 million. And just to put that in perspective for you, that's about twice what we normally see each month before we start our credit and collections process to motivate payments. Credit and collection process includes emails, mailing, direct mailings, contacting customers, notifying them they have a past due account, and trying to get them set up payment plans or make payments so they can avoid disconnection. And this is the, this is what Garner looks like. It shows our past due amounts in Garner. The high points that you see there are when the bills are mailed out, and the valleys show the past due amount before the next billing goes out. And if you'll notice, the valleys are trending higher over time, which is, indicates that fewer payments are being made over time. I think right now, we have about 600 customers in, in Garner that are in this particular situation. They're over $125 in past due. So we do have some things in place to help our customers impacted by the, by the pandemic. We have the Utility Customer Assistance Program, or we call it UCAP, which Garner participates with funding. It provides up to $240 per year for eligible customers. And under the program, in Garner, only Garner customers would be assisted with Garner funding, with the UCAP funding. It is general fund funded. It is intended to, to serve various jurisdictions only. Roseville does the same, and Raleigh does the same. We also have Project Share, and it is funded by customer and corporate contributions. Sponsors can elect to contribute monthly as part of their utility bill, or they can send a one-time contribution. And the program's administered under the same criteria as the UCAP program. Wake County Human Services does the screening for us and does the administration of the project, except assistance for this particular program is available to all customers in the entire service area. And I, and I had a really something that made me feel good yesterday. I got a phone call from one of our staff that said, one of our customers called and said that she had received her second stimulus check, and that she knew there, there are people who need it more than she does. And so she donated $1,200, her stimulus checks, to Project Share. And those are the kinds of things that are going to make a difference to help our, our customers in need dig out. So, I would encourage anyone who's watching, council members, go visit our website, City of Raleigh website, Raleigh Water website. We've got information about Project Share up there. We've got some videos. We've got how you can participate and help. And it, it will make a big difference. Sort of got sidetracked there a little bit, but there's also some funding available through Wake County. Wake County Board of Commissioners approved $5 million of CARES Act funding that we receive from the federal government to be used toward utility bill assistance. Customers that qualify can receive up to $500 for water and sewer, gas, or electric utility bills. In order to qualify, customers must have been impacted by the virus, by COVID-19. And the program is called Wake Helps. We also offer payment plans. Typically, our payment plans are two to four months to help folks dig out of whatever debt they're in, so they can make a manageable payment plan amount and pay their normal bill. But with this unprecedented time, we're extending payment plans out, at least out to 12 months. Not every customer's going to need 12 months, but we're making that available to those who do. Our average customer's in arrears about $400. And so we feel like if we can spread that out over 12 payments, that that's something that's manageable along with their, their normal utility bill. The governor also recently announced some additional funding assistance, which we are trying to learn more about right now, but we expect it'll also be administered by Wake County. And we continue to explore additional funding sources to help our customers out. So I'm near the end now, and at the beginning, I asked you, how much did you think a gallon of tap water delivered to our customers and the sewer taken away would cost? One gallon. Does anybody want to take a guess?
95 cents.
I was gonna guess a quarter, but I'm, I'm still high on that, because I went to the back and read.
I wish we could get 95 cents. I wish we could get a quarter, but we don't need it. Actually, a gallon of tap water is 6 tenths of a cent. And when you add water and sewer service to that, it's a penny and a half a gallon, or about $1.88 a day. And so, if you think about all the things, other services we get, our cable bill, our cell phone bill, our electric bill, all the other things that we get, I feel like we get a really good value out of that buck 88 cent a day for that water. And I'll leave you with a thought that clean, safe drinking water and sanitary sewer service are critical to our everyday lives, and I do not want to imagine a day without water. So with that, that's all I have for you today. I will be glad to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. And yeah, I'll see if council has any question, but very, very interesting presentation, Mr. Massengill, and thank you for the good work you do. I wasn't on the council when the town took the action to merge, but I think it's one of the wiser decisions they made, probably. And I know a number of other municipalities who've done the same thing. I haven't heard anybody say they'd want to go back to the way they had it before, I don't think. I'll start down here, if there are questions or comments. Mr. Vance?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
I thought it was all right, Mr. Massengill, that you showed the 2,400 miles that the water line would go to Las Vegas and then the sewer line back, because that's just like taking money to Las Vegas, because going up there, you might as well just push it, you know, flush it down the drains.
Well, maybe that's, maybe that's part of the hill you're straying there, with the sewer bringing it back, except it usually doesn't come back, does it?
I think something important, as I recall, because I was on the council when we did the merger, that Raleigh spent somewhere, the, the reason our, our rates were higher for eight years or so, which was less than 10 years, got done in less time, was you spent between, I think, 30 and 35 million dollars, might have been more, on capital improvements in this area. You had a lot of work that had to be done.
I don't know the specific number, but there's been tens of millions spent, excluding the Benton Plant. But the Benton Plant is a, is a $100 million project in itself. But yes, there's been quite a bit of improvements. We've replaced a lot of the AC water mains in town. You're part of the entire system, so we're looking at the system as a whole. And so we're, we're going where the problem's the worst. And if your pipes are the worst, that's where we're coming. But we're also doing replacements in Wake Forest, Wendell, Zebulon, Roseville, the entire service area.
I think we currently have a project, this agreement, where we do the sidewalk on, on Vandal Springs Road between Timber Drive and Tiffany Circle, we're gonna do a replacement water line there that you said that needs some attention. So, thank you for coming.
Just a quick curiosity question. Can I assume, is this model available in many of our larger cities across North Carolina where they merge, or smaller towns on the outskirts? I know Charlotte has a lot of small towns.
Charlotte is the next example. They're the largest utility in the state, and they have merged with the surrounding towns in Mecklenburg County. There are some other utility systems that I don't think are truly merged, where in our situation, we actually own the utilities in Garner. But there are partnerships where one utility will provide, you know, water supply or wastewater treatment services to another municipality. But pretty much Raleigh and, and Charlotte are the big regional utilities in the state.
Yeah. And part of the reason I ask, you read like I have, with the, with the cutoff of the disconnects being changed now, there are some, I understand, smaller towns across the state are, you know, who provide that, that service to their citizens that are really struggling right now because of non-payment.
They need that revenue. And so, you know, deferring disconnects to motivate payment, and as bad as it sounds, it does motivate payment. And so, we do know there are a lot of small towns that are, that are really struggling. They need that payment, and that's why we believe that the governor allowed the executive order expire on July 31.
Okay. All right. Anything else from staff?
I just want to thank Robert for being here today, but I also want to thank his team while he's here too, because our staff is working with them on nearly a daily basis. For all the plan reviews that y'all see, that Robert's got staff that is a part of our technical review committee that helps get those plans reviewed and in good shape before they come to planning commission and council. So that's one of those things that you don't see. That's a critical part of our merger partnership. The other thing that we work with them pretty closely on is, as we mentioned earlier, when we talked, looked at the maps, we've got some unique challenges with getting water and sewer, not just under I-540, but because our jurisdiction goes to the edge of, of the Wake County boundary. So we've got several spots in town that are pretty challenging. So over the years, Robert and his staff have spent a great deal of time with us trying to figure out creative solutions. Sometimes it's with staff, and staff and developers. So one of the other things that you'd often see, when development projects come to you, there's often been a, a lot of planning that's gone on between the developer and Raleigh, and oftentimes our staff, to figure out, what can we do when there's not a pump station where there needs to be a pump station to still get that happening? And they've, they've got some programs over the years, like paying developers to upsize water lines. So when they're running water lines, they're making them larger to be able to serve a larger area. They're also working on some things similar to that, for ways that we can handle some of the, the sewer challenges that we've got. And, and those will be rolling out in the future. So I just wanted to, to make y'all aware of all those many kinds of interactions that we have with Robert and his team. And one of the reasons we wanted to bring him here today, when we're talking about ETJ and I-540 and all of that, is, again, we thought all these topics sort of came together to address some of the things council's talked about before. And so, if there's any questions that, that y'all have, not just about Robert's presentation, but about growth in general, I think while, while Robert's still here and Tim's still here, if, if they're willing to be here for a moment, if there are other sort of broader questions, we also want to just understand those today. And if we can't answer those today, then we'll get back with you and have follow-up to those.
Okay. Well, again, first, I'd like to thank, thank Robert for his good presentation, and acknowledge Jason out there as well. I call him your sidekick, Robert. I don't know if that's a good term.
He is. He's a good one.
Yeah, okay. But, okay, thank you, sir. And yeah, council, let's see, were we, I, I didn't have a, an ending time, but it's anticipated we will.
By six.
Okay, or before then, if need be. Yeah, okay. So, council, specific questions at this time, if any, while all these good people are here. I was going to ask the planning folks, I know you talked about the, the number of people who come into Wake County on a daily basis, or the growth and so forth. Is there a way to sort of project where, where, where those, where those six people a day are going? I mean, are, within Wake County, obviously, different towns are growing at different rates, but does anybody know much where more of the pressure is coming from in terms of the growth patterns? We're certainly starting to get some of it, but not as much as other areas, I guess.
Yeah, we, we do have data. The county has data.
The county has data that shows the trends of growth in each municipal corporate limits. I mean, that data is available, and we can project that growth out.
Okay. Okay. I will just say one thing, and I'd say this to you, but to the public at large. I know, I know we're challenged in our county and/or municipalities with the census count, and I, I know Wake County is, is doing what it can to, to both keep the word out there and to, and to get a good count, and certainly in our town the same. I think we were at 70%. I'm not sure if Rick is here, maybe a little better than that, but that's, that's a count we certainly need to, to, to get up as high as possible. Thank you. Okay.
One quick question. There's mention of the small area plans, which was also mentioned in our comprehensive plan, the small area plans. Where are those initiated and developed? Are those developed from the planning staff to come to us, or is it council that says we'd like to have a small area plan for this area, develop one? What's the process for developing these small area plans?
So typically, I would say that, that, that comes from y'all as kind of an initial identification of a particular issue or a particular area. Certainly, if we're aware of something, it can go the other way as well. It can come from the, from the community, you know, through y'all. I think one of the, it wasn't what I would call a true small area study, but we did take a look at the, the transportation kind of issues around the Aversboro 50 area. And so, you know, it, it just kind of depends on the nature of the prod, the nature of the issue and the geographic scope. That can be something very small and result in just a quick report, or it can be something more comprehensive that, hey, we want to, you know, take a look at everything again, all the topics that were said in the comp plan, but then do a deeper dive for this particular area. So it's, it's really an open-ended process, but it can go both ways.
Thank you.
Jeff, I'm thinking that, yeah, on some occasions, some of these have been surfaced, I think, at our staff retreat, where we've talked about some of these issues and maybe had some discussion that helped provide some guidance anyway. Okay.
Yeah.
Question. I'm going to turn it to our staff, for Mr. Massengill. He mentioned, and I noticed on his chart, that the main, water transmission main on Jones Saucers Road, it shows F-525, I reckon, for funding. But there were, of course, of our plans to, to, to further make, make further improvements on Jones Saucers Road and that part down south. I mean, there, I don't know if that's all going in conjunction, because that's a whole road to do, it's not just that part, but I reckon they do know that, that we're working in conjunction with them on that.
Well, and, and whether we are today or not, just like the example that you used of Vandora Springs, there's always a point in our planning process where we cross over to, to our utility partners to say, is there anything coming up in the near future that we need to be aware of? So whether the coordination has happened at this day or not, it will be happening before we do any design work.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. Anything else from, yeah?
One last question. There is a mention of kind of the key visions for the county, inclusive equitable, healthy and active. And there's a mention too of workforce housing, inclusion, inclusion, or planning for, what role does, do you envision the county having in assisting a municipality in developing that workforce housing?
Dropped my phone. I don't want to forget that. The county has an affordable housing plan that was adopted a few years ago by the county board of commissioners. And with that came a revenue source, continuing revenue source to fund affordable housing throughout Wake County. And typically, when the county does affordable housing, it's in collaboration with municipalities. Because when you think about where affordable housing needs to go, it needs to go where resources are, whether it be transit, whether it be other services that affordable housing needs, which is typically in a municipality. So we're partnering with developers and municipalities across Wake County to implement and leverage the money that the county does have with other sources to do affordable housing in all jurisdictions within, within Wake County.
You have, are there municipalities where you've done successful collaboration relatively recently?
I don't know them offhand. I can get you information on that through our affordable housing staff. I'd be glad to do that. I'll send, I'll make a note and send some over.
Thank you.
Council, are you ready to conclude this session? And you, I could give you a little time between resuming here pretty soon. So I want to thank all of you, particularly county folks, for spending your afternoon with us. This is one of those unusual sessions. We mostly do our meetings at night, but occasionally we have special meetings. So I know it took your, your time to, to come here, and Tim and your staff, and Robert and your staff, and who else am I missing? Should say Chris and his staff, but he's a staff of one, I guess. So if there's no other business to come before the council, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Samu.
All right. Samu'd and seconded. Any discussion, none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Session is adjourned. We will reconvene at 7:00 PM.